In favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
I'm coming.
Let the record show Mr. Brown is next door. He's here. All right, 5-0, thank you. And we also need a motion to close out the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. And now I need to call to order the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Work Session for 6:21-22 at 4:00 p.m. And we also need to adopt the agenda.
Dr. Simmons, that we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, let the record show, 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Doss. Our consent agenda items, you see there?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept our consent agenda items as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. 5-0, thank you. And now to our action items. Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Good to see you again, Madam Chair, thank you. The superintendent recommends approval of the FY22 amended budget with appropriations as follows. General Fund, $97.8 million. Special Revenue Fund, $33.1 million. Nutrition Fund, $6.6 million. Lonnie, will you go to the attachment with the yellow on it, please, sir? You've got two attachments in your agenda packet, board members. I wanted to just run through this right quick. This first document, you saw this last year, there's an original adopted general fund budget on the left-hand side of your page, focusing on the right. There are some compliance laws in the state of Georgia which tie us to not being overspent or over-revenue, et cetera, over 5% in certain categories, so that's the reason that we're formally asking for a budget adoption tonight. You will see this when we come back in here next month and do our final June financial report wrap-up. We'll have these totals in the financial report. So over to the right, if you remember, we paid some supplements this year that the Governor's Office funded, that was additional revenue, which created additional expense. That's the main reason that we're asking for this amendment tonight. The second page, as I show you, will be our special revenue grants. $27.2 million increased to $33 million in revenues. The yellow is the portion I'll focus you on, there are, is a part of it at the bottom that didn't change because those were transfers for the pre-K program. And again, these are expenditures that we have incurred and revenues that we have gained through primarily our ESER grants and some of our other school activity funds, et cetera, at the school level that we have to bring in and show the board at the end of the year. The third document will be the nutrition fund. The only part changing is some yellow at the top of the page, which is some increased revenue that the CEP program, Seamless Summer Option, has created. There were no changes in the middle, the white section for expenses. And then, as I explained a few months ago, there was some reimbursements to the general fund for stimulus money that came to Mr. Wheeler's program that was given back to the general fund, which leaves him a budget of approximately $850,000 in fund balance. With that, it is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve the FY22 amended budget as presented. Are there any questions?
No questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Before we do that, Madam Chair, I do would like to make a statement as it relates to the budget and the items that is listed within the actual budget from every step, from general fund, special revenue fund, nutrition, debt service, and capital projects for fund. I just want to say that I have been an advocate in making sure that we're able... Okay. All right, no questions, no statement.
Dr. Simmons, I just want to know your secret. How are you getting him to hush like that?
We actually practiced that. That was part of...
Okay, I want to learn that, and I want to get with you on that because I might have to use that.
Well, like I said, it was practice.
Okay.
Yeah, it was practice. More him than me.
All right, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, before we call for the question, could I just convey something to Mr. Jones and Dr. Simmons and whoever else, I guess, kind of revise the budget proceedings? I did hear some complimentary comments about how each school, department, or whatever came before you guys and submitted whatever their wish list was or whatever they desired. And I just wanted to pass that on and let you know, I know some people appreciated that process, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, 5-0, for the FY22 amended budget. All right, Mr. Jones?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, again, this is the actual FY23 final adoption of our budget. I want to read the summary and then point you to two attachments as I go through a presentation. So the summary reads, "Superintendent recommends approval of the FY23 budget with appropriations as follows. General Fund, $99.4 million. Special Revenue Fund, $28.6 million. Nutrition Fund, $7.4 million. Debt Service Fund, zero. And Capital Projects Fund, $14 million." Lonnie, if you'll go to the actual presentation. Okay, board members, as I expressed to you in the public hearing, this is actually presentation number five, but this will be the FY23 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. Non-negotiables, communicating effectively is what we're going to see if I'm able to do whenever you take the vote tonight, but we're going to be professional and accountable as we explain. Mission Statement, again, empowering each student as we plan these revenues and expenditures to ensure that they graduate college and career-ready. And then the roadmap to success is, again, something we're using in conjunction with our redo of our Continuous School Improvement Plan going forward with our school district. So these appropriation of all funds, this is our spending patterns for general fund, special revenue, capital projects, school, nutrition, and debt service. The only change on this from prior meeting would be the fund, the expenditures for general fund, which we went back and looked at that and revised our revenue streams as well after talking to the Tax Commissioner's Office and appropriated our spending. When we looked at some of our blue sheets for our good, better, best, we were able to comprise some of that spending downward a little bit, and so that's reflected here in some of our expenditure totals. I will remind you, at the bottom of this screen, we did put in a little bullet that this is utilizing an expectation of $16.742 mils, which is no change of the rate for millage from the prior year. As a reminder, we did look at school allotments this year. The board in FY22 graciously granted the schools the ability to make whole or remain whole, to give us a year to kind of look at the ramifications of COVID. So this year, going into FY23, we did need to look at truing up some of the school totals to help us balance out some of our salary increases, et cetera, which we'll talk about in just a minute. So as a reminder, for our general fund, $95.9 million will be your revised revenue totals, $99.4 million for our expenditures, which gives us a balance of $3.5 million. As I've explained to you before, this is needed because of, A, we're exceeding the state average in our use of fund balance. 15% is the roundabout percentage, and we're over that, so it's okay to plan that budget in that manner for audit purposes as well. And then also, as we have talked to you about continuity of services in our ESER II, CARES II-type funding, we have shared with you that we plan to leave some principals and assistant principal and a few select central office positions into that grant for FY23. So if those compliance rules and laws change during the year, we do need to have some kind of cushion to bring those back into the general fund. This also avoids the need to come back to you with a budget amendment early in the year if that was the change on us. If you'll notice our, what we call, blue sheets, this has been trimmed down to a recommendation tied to a goal area with a requested amount and a funding source. So no longer the good, better, best. If you'll remember, we did not necessarily recommend the best option on each one, if you go back to prior PowerPoints. Most of them were the best, but some of them were better. So I wanted to kind of try to run through this in a kind of a lump sum value. I'd like to just first talk about numbers 1 through 5, and all of this deals with investment in human capital. Again, we're going to inject the $2,000 salary increase to the administrative and certified salary scales. The percentages over to the left vary based on where people fall on that degree level. With the state salary scale, there are some lateral steps. So, and the state puts this information out, so some of those employees may just see the $2,000. Some of them, if they're on another step, might see an incremental increase to their local supplement based on that $2,000 increase. So I'm giving you a range based on those factors that we play in. Step increases as well, for those eligible employees that are on that step or not a lateral step, they would see that as well. Our compensation study, which we looked to see how we ranked with neighboring districts and seeing, trying to see how competitive our salaries were. Employees on those scales will see anywhere from, what I would say, a .5 increase of a percent to up to maybe 20% based on how competitive their salary is in the marketplace of what we looked at. So there are going to, every employee is going to benefit to some degree. There are some that the market showed we were kind of out of line with, so we're making those recommendations to you, and we provided that to you in your budget book prior for you to go ahead and take a look at those salaries. Again, I'm telling you that if you get a question on why there's a variance in percentage, I want you to be armed with how to answer that. Our last two will be us talking about longevity steps for certified employees that have been in our district and are capped out on the state certified scale. We will inject some resources into there to hopefully retain them, to want to work longer for our district. And then, an item that Ms. Battle actually innovatively brought to us about incentivizing our classified employees who are not eligible for teacher's retirement, incentivizing them to retain their sick leave, and then upon disemployment, they would receive some type stipend for that. So 1 through 5 are all about injecting additional human capital resources. Number 6, 7, 8, and 9 are about additional personnel. We've talked about a centralized budget and procurement analyst position, which would handle some bidding out and budget procurement procedures with our district, which I think is, would be a good process for us, would look at all district operations. Compensation specialist and executive secretary, we've identified that before as something in the Human Resources Department that's really needed. The compensation specialist, again, that will, upon approval tonight, with your approval, Ms. Battle's office will immediately access that position to sit down with employees for sign-offs of prior salary, future salary, hourly rate, and make sure that we are vetting that with each employee, that they understand what they're signing. We'll get them to sign off that they understand what their salary is going to be. And special education, number 9, there was a need for some additional resources there. I'll point out just the occupational therapist. I know Mr. Kelly's in the audience, he'll be nodding probably when I say this, but there's a caseload limit for speech-language pathologist. Occupational therapists have a best-practice limit, caseload limit. And I'm telling, saying that to you because we want to be armed with these additional positions whenever we start the school year, we can bill Medicaid for them, so we're actually receiving reimbursement back and not actually having the full pay of that salary coming out of our general fund, the way we can bill those procedures. When I talked to you earlier about revenue, I was telling you that's $400,000 to $500,000 a year that we bring in for those services. So just keep in mind, that's not a one-to-one, we get some of that back. Leader-in-me initiative was innovatively brought to us by Dr. Simmons. He's familiar with that program. I believe that's Moreland Road and Futural that that will be instituted at. I think we'll look at additional schools after maybe this pilot year for that program. Mental health condition will be a contracted service position paid out of our RFSI III funds that Human Resources brought to our attention, that they wanted us to look at. Superintendent's recommended that based on, you know, just challenges in the workplace today that we have in our community in general. New enterprise resource platform, that was actually trimmed down from $900,000 to $750,000 from the prior presentation. I was able to get a revised quote from a particular vendor that may be one of the ones that we consider if this is approved. So again, that's from the RFSI III funding, but that is a little different from the prior meeting. Droplet is something we talked about to make us more innovative in our form preparation procedures, go to electronic sign-ons for things for personnel-related salmon forms is a term we use in wherever we're trying to hire personnel and get multiple sign-offs from supervisors. Canvas and ClassLink, we've talked about that before, that we have, we've already approved that at board meetings prior, but we wanted to show you that for transparency. The Canvas is actually listed in our goal areas and learning management system to take us in a different way that we were using Google in the past for student performance. Kick-up modules, just some professional learning modules. You all, last year, approved a new professional learning system for us, which I think's been real successful this year, but this is two additional modules that will help move us to another level in professional learning. Sam's, you've heard Dr. Simmons talk about that before. I believe, Dr. Simmons, that's going to be all schools and some central office positions that $108,000 will actually potentially open up some access to a conference to attend as well, that'll pull, put all schools in that procedure, and then they can be evaluated based on the performance of that, is one. The next three, the board brought to the superintendent's attention, the need or the want or the desire to look at several positions that you felt was important for our district. So Safety and Security Director or Coordinator, I'm not sure the exact title once this vets out, but that position. Truancy Officer, Fine Arts Coordinator, all being recommended to you tonight. Again, these are ballpark salaries, they could be higher or lower based on job description analysis once we put it out to the market. And a final item for a partnership and leadership in education from the University of Virginia, I think Dr. Simmons gave you a recap of that at the last meeting, that's approximately $93,000 for our district. So I believe on one of these prior slides, this number was approaching $9 million in cost, and we've got it down to 7.6, probably going to be less than that, but that's, I think that's a worst-case scenario for you to look at in terms of those sheets. I'm going to go ahead and do the next few and then take any questions. So special revenue funds, this only changed the middle couple of slide, middle section, I wanted to just clarify. I've talked to Ms. Austin and Dr. Taylor, we want to have a concerted effort to make sure our terminology is all on the same page. So we're going to quit using the word CARES, we're going to use ESER I, ESER II, ESER III. So ESER III is the only one that would be interchangeable with ARP. ARP and ESER III means the same thing. You won't hear me say CARES II anymore, I'm saying ESER II. ESER II is used in the middle of the screen to offset revenue losses in the general fund, and that's what we were talking about by putting our salaries in there for one more year for principals and APs. ARP or ESER III is used to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID. So I just want to be clear, the uses for ESER II for us balancing the general fund is not the same process we're using for our RFSI III funds. We're actually ingesting additional resources, whether it be terminology like bridge teachers, additional EIP teachers, 20% learning loss money, ERP system, all this is new and innovative stuff, not to be confused with what we were using for ESER II. Nutrition Fund, the only comment I want to make is the first, I guess it would be the second bullet, but under the adopt, second sentence, this entitles every student to receive lunch and breakfast at no cost to them. No cost to them, no cost to the parents. Okay? Debt Service, zero impact again, as I've explained before. And Capital Projects, again, this is approximate spending that we would spend in this fiscal year, balanced out by prior receipts that we're still holding or ones that we're balancing that we're getting every month, which is still over $1 million dollars average a month. So in summary, our budget highlights, we're not going to be proposing an increase to the millage rate, which would be 16.742. Increase on these blue sheets is 10 positions in the general fund. I talked to you about ESER II supplements for continuity of services already. We talked a little bit about our certified and classified salary increases with steps and the need to be more competitive in our classified compensation study. Teacher allotments, we touched on that, and we talked about longevity supplements for certified, and our incentives for PSERS employees. And then, obviously, you all have already approved the instructional calendar of 177 student days. And as always, we will continue to monitor and update the Board of Education with any proposed amendments if we get to that point in the fall or spring before we're back in here this point next year. That was a mouthful, but I'm going to stop and ask, is there any questions at this point?
Questions, board members?
I don't have a question, Mr. Jones, I just have a comment. For those listening and for those in this room, this is a tremendous task to put together, number one. It's a tremendous task to understand it, number two. But I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Jones and his office, Dr. Simmons and his office, and our board members who have met either, for example, I did a Zoom meeting last week with Mr. Jones and Mr. Simmons. I'm sure other board members have had, we've texted, we've called, we've emailed, and I just want to publicly thank everyone in this organization for answering our questions because this is a big deal. This is one of the three things that a school board member does. We hire and fire superintendents, we change policy to make it better, and we have to pass a budget. That's pretty much it. We don't do the day-to-day operations, that's why we hired him, that's why we hired you. So I just wanted to publicly thank all of you for answering our questions at sometimes 9:30, at 10 at night, doing a Zoom meeting the next morning when it was just easier. And I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it as a board member.
And, Madam Chair, if I may, I think this is the right time, right, Mr. Holmes, Leader Holmes? So as a board member, one of the things that I really enjoyed about being a board member is being able to provide input on the budget. We know that the budget drives the work that we do here in our district. And I believe that this budget appears to have all, has considered all the factors and variances during the budget planning to provide a balanced and equitable budget. In my years as a board member, this is the most hands-on that we as a board have had in being able to plan this process, in the budget planning process. There's been multiple public meetings for us to provide input to the general public, the general public to provide input to us. Some have taken advantage of it, some not, but know that all comments have been heard. And when you think about our particular budget and you see the presentation that the Chief Financial Officer and his team has done, to be able to put it together and provide the highlights and look at the five different areas in which monies are allocated within our school district, I think is very great, especially when we're thinking about high-performing staff. We want our staff to be the very best. We want to make sure that we're able to provide our staff with the resources that they need in order to be the best in the content that they teach. When you think about the organization of the district and the operational efficiency, when you look at, if you would, scroll down to the actual budget, Mr. Jones, and for the general public, if they were not aware, you see the different, go back, right there. You see how it has the recommendation that the superintendent has provided. It also tells the goal area and how it's going to drive and do the work that we're doing, as well as the request, and then the funding source where the money is coming from. And this is available online, this has been in all five presentations that have been done, and I just want the general public to know that if there's any questions about the budget, of course, we as board members are available to talk to you, but it's all there online for you to be able to read and understand where it's coming from. And so I just want to say to my colleagues, thank you so much for the hands-on and the collaboration that we were able to complete, and it just seems each year gets better and better and better. I'm reminded of my chorus teacher from high school, James Lindsay, that said, "Good, better, best, never let it rest," to your good is your gooder and your better is your best. And so when we think about this budget, to our fine arts teachers, know that there are monies allocated to you. We are in the process of going through, which I just got this information from HR, on all the positions, so whether it's the Fine Arts Coordinator, the Truancy Officer, School and Safety Coordinator, as well as the Budget and Procurement Analyst, HR has provided a detailed report for us so that we as the board, the general public, will understand what is going on and the methods and who's responsible for those different things. And to those fine arts teachers, once we get that coordinator in, they will communicate more with you on what that process will be in order to request funds, so whether it's art supplies, music for our chorus and band teachers, we're excited to be able to support you in this mission and vision. And like again, to the superintendent and to the CFO, thank you guys so much, and to staff for everything that you guys have done to ensure that the budget was set and that we had what we needed in order to pass this budget for our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments or questions, board members?
And I would like to go ahead and make a motion for us to pass our budget.
Please do.
So moved.
All right, motion?
Second.
We have a second. All right, we're voting on the motion to accept the budget as presented for fiscal year 2023. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you, 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, you can breathe, Mr. Jones.
All right, Madam Chair, I neglected to say this, but I do want to give a shout-out to School Board Partners, which is a national organization. About two years ago, I received a certificate in Educational Finance, and so a lot of the work that I was not familiar with my first year as a board member, School Board Partners has definitely prepared me to be able to dive in and ask the tough questions and seek more answers to the things that we approve as it relates to our budget. So shout-out to School Board Partners from coast to coast, appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, presentations and discussions, we have a presentation by Mr. Lonnie Harper, Policy EFC.
Good afternoon, board. Dr. Simmons?
Good afternoon.
The district is presenting Policy EFC Data Analysis Technology Plan for the first reading. This is a new policy that came as a recommendation from the curriculum audit and was part of the previous district strategic plan. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that we have the technology tools and the purchases that are aligned with the district curricular goals and our budget needs. Any questions?
All right, no questions? Do I have a motion?
No.
Oh, it's not an action item, sorry.
Yeah, these are presentations.
We're through with action, sorry.
Take me down. First reading.
Questions?
So there's no action on this at all? Okay. Actually, that's right, 30 days.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harper. And Policy IFBGE, Internet Safety, first reading?
Yes, ma'am. The district is presenting the revision of Policy IFBGE, Internet Safety, for the first reading. This policy was updated to add a little more detail about exactly what was meaning, the meaning behind internet safety. So if this is, what's on the screen, this additional paragraph, or this original paragraph was all that was part of the original policy. And so what is recommended for the adding is here in red, so I know that's a little backwards, so I wanted to clarify that piece for you.
I'm having a hard time hearing you for some reason.
I'll push up the volume when I go back there. Any questions?
No.
Mr. Harper?
Yes, sir.
If you would go back and share with the board the process for the first read so that everyone is clear with regards to what you're presenting and where it is in the process for policy revision. Just go ahead and read that piece for me.
Okay. The background piece, it's a recommendation. Thank you, sir. The district will post the revision of Policy IFBGE, Internet Safety, on assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting following the 30-day period for second reading and final board adoption. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Harper.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Crawford, gifted and accelerated update?
Good afternoon. How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good.
It's a pleasure to be here. All right, let's jump right in. Our non-negotiables, be professional, be accountable, and communicate effectively. And our focus areas, literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline, and solving. Our vision statement, a... Our vision statement, a distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools. And our mission to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. You're very familiar with the roadmap to success. One of my goals today is to make sure you see connections throughout this presentation to this map. So my purpose today, as I just stated, I want to make connections to the roadmap to success or the strategic plan. I want to share data on our gifted program and accelerated offerings, and I want to just provide an update on what we're doing in Gifted and Acceleration. All right, we're going to start with just a little bit of background. Let me get caught up here with my notes. All right, I'd like to begin by setting the context. Recently, the Griffin Spalding County School System conducted a gifted audit. The committee, led by Dr. Sauce, was composed of faculty members, parents, and students. I also served on this team, and we examined a variety of data and concluded with a number of recommendations. This school year, I picked up with a gifted or accelerated Better Seeking Team, which again was comprised of faculty, parents, and students. Our work centered on enhancing the GSCS offerings and making a recommendation for the 2022-2023 school year. Later in the presentation, you will hear more information on AVID, which is the recommendation that was brought forth based on that committee's work. So let's talk a little bit specifically about Gifted. Let's begin by exploring how a student might get referred for gifted testing. So a referral could happen in several ways. A teacher could make a referral, a parent could make a referral. We've even had students refer themselves or another student. We also review our MAP data and use that to help screen for potential students. The great thing is MAP can also count as one of the indicators under achievement. And we've also even had it where a psychologist may be doing some evaluations, and they see some things in a student, and they may refer that student for gifted testing. After a student is referred, it goes to a student search slash eligibility team. This is at the school level where they review data on the students and try to decide if that student should go ahead for further testing. If the team says yes, then we move into the formal evaluation. In that phase, we gather data in four areas, mental abilities, achievement, creativity, and motivation. And I'm going to discuss more of that in a moment on the next slide. After the formal evaluation, we either deem that the child is eligible or is not eligible for gifted services. If the child is eligible, we send home a consent to the family, and the parent decides if they do indeed want the child to receive those gifted services. As I just mentioned, this is the DOE criteria for qualifying for gifted education. You can see there are two routes that a child could go through to qualify. Option A, which is in one column, or option B. We are required to gather data in all four areas on every student, but you can see the criteria for mental abilities, achievement, creativity, and motivation depending on the And I would just like to say a little off-script that the team, when they're doing the assessment, they work really, really hard to try to find another opportunity. If a child is close in a certain area, they may find another screener to go back and administer. All right, here is, or here are the data around our gifted numbers. You can see a four-year tracking there. This is all grades K through 12. You can see it also broken down by subgroup. With the wide net of the four areas under the GODEA Gifted Eligibility Criteria, the mental, the mental, the achievement, the creativity, and the motivation, along with an increase in student testing, we have seen an increase in our gifted numbers, and we've also seen an increase in identified African-American gifted students, which was one of the focuses that came out of our gifted audit. All right, as we move into talking about some specific things under Gifted, I would like to just show that this work aligns to the roadmap of success. You can see that referenced here at the bottom. We're looking under Goal Area Four, Student Achievement, Preparing College and Career Readiness Skills. And the two things I'm going to reference here will increase opportunities for advanced learning and rigorous coursework opportunities for all students, and provide professional learning on traits and identification of gifted learners and model gifted strategies. So the first thing I just want to point out here is a cohort of teachers are being funded to earn their gifted endorsement. I'm excited that the district is making use of money to, to do that. I think we're going to have approximately 20 teachers earning their gifted endorsement this upcoming year, and that seems so important. Those courses talk about characteristics and curriculum, so it's very, very, very helpful in this work. I also just want to point out the Gifted Department Lead. This is a continuation from the spring of 2022. We were able to have a retired gifted teacher do some data digs, provide strategies and testing requirements, just sharing that with teachers. And particularly, this work was done at Ann Street, Atkinson, and more. We did also provide this session during post-planning, so any teacher who was interested was able to come and hear more information. While I've labeled it here as Gifted Department Lead, as we move into next year, we want to continue this. And really, I also see it kind of as a talent search person who's going in the schools, looking in classrooms, looking at data, and helping work through that whole identification All right, in the next part, I want to continue talking about Gifted, but also bring in accelerated learning. And I'll explain why I'm adding those extra words here. You may hear us talk about honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment. And while in our district, gifted students can be served in honors, advanced placement, and dual classes, we also serve students who are not identified as gifted, but who have demonstrated exceptional ability and motivation in a particular area. So hence the acceleration piece. You may not have the gifted tag, but you can still receive supports to meet your needs. So our middle school students have the opportunity to earn high school credit. This is definitely preparing them for that increased rigor and helping them to compete beyond high school, as you can see referenced at the bottom. This year, we had 153 eighth graders taking high school courses while in the eighth grade, 245 attempted credits, meaning some students took more than one course, some may have taken one, some may have taken two, some may have taken three, and they earned 224 high school credits. Our offerings are Algebra I, Physical Science, and Introduction to Business and Technology. And just sharing some trend data that was in Assembly from the past few years with a goal of 150 students. And you can see we had 153, so we did meet that goal. So now we'll continue to inch that goal forward. All right, AP or Advanced Placement, we had 331 high schoolers taking AP courses this past school year, or I guess technically it's still this school year, since we're still in June. There was 466 credits attempted with 438 credits being earned. Dual Enrollment, we had a number of, 180 students taking dual enrollment courses this past year, many taking more than one. We had 620 attempts at credit, 575 credits earned. So this is really an opportunity, again, for children or our students to have that advanced learning, rigorous coursework, and being prepared for college and career readiness. Just a couple of other updates under Gifted and Accelerated. We did offer a pre-AP course this year. It was 10th-grade literature that was piloted at Spalding High School. Next school year, we will have it at Griffin High School, so that will be in both schools. And we will continue, and we do, to offer advanced placement courses at both high schools. And we do always budget and provide training for teachers as they are teaching a new AP course, or if the course has had an update and they need additional training. Excuse me. Advancement via Individual Determination, AVID. I'm going to come up in just a minute and talk a little more about that on the next slide. But I did just want to remind you, that was the recommendation that came out of the work of the Better Seeking Team this school year. Just to put this other item on the radar for future considerations, I know the budget has been completed for next year. Just in the future, it may be helpful to consider a gifted and accelerated coordinator. While the work of supporting gifted and accelerated learning occurs, it's occurring in our district, you've seen evidence of that hopefully in the presentation, identifying a coordinator whose sole focus would be on this subgroup would be beneficial in advancing those efforts. So again, that's just, put it on your radar, and maybe, maybe one day we can bring that All right, I do want to, before I go to the next slide, I do just want to point out this action step C, research and provide training on high-yield instructional strategies that are designed to increase the student's readiness for college and career. And our connection there is AVID. I'd like to pause a minute here on this pyramid. AVID calls this the College and Career Readiness Framework, which I think so, again, beautifully aligns to what we are already doing here in the district and want to just continue to do. If you notice the four quadrants behind the, the triangle or the pyramid, instruction, systems, culture, leadership, all foundational in allowing AVID to be successful and supporting our students and educators. You get to the pyramid, you'll see the top part is called What Students Need. They need rigorous academic preparedness, student agency, and opportunity knowledge. They need the challenging courses, they need to know why they need it, they need to know what they need, and they need to be able to help advocate for that. That's what AVID will help do for students. For educators, we have to insist on rigor. We have to break down barriers. We have to align the work, and we have to advocate for students. While we were in Texas with the AVID Summer Institute, we, we heard from a young lady who's, who really just said a teacher totally interrupted her life, but it was a good interruption. She was advocating for the students, saying, "These are the classes, we need to get you here." And how that just propelled and changed, turned out that the student ended up being a teacher. So what a wonderful blessing came from that. And you'll see all of this is surrounded by relational capacity, working together, having those relationships. We know that is key. You have seen this information before when I brought to you the memo in May for approval for AVID. Just as a reminder, the advancement via individual determination, otherwise known as AVID, College Readiness System is designed to help school systems increase student achievement by closing the opportunity gap. Think about that in terms of that pyramid, advocating, rigor. By preparing students for college readiness and success in a global society, AVID is not a program. So if you hear that, please know that it's not a program. It is a solution for systematically increasing academic rigor, creating engaging learning environments, and accelerating the performance of underrepresented students. Teachers are trained and equipped with effective strategies. Again, lots of connections here to our work on the roadmap to success, college and career readiness, understudent achievement, increasing opportunities for advanced learning, rigorous coursework, research and training on high-yield strategies. So our implementation, we are moving forward with our four middle schools and Program Challenge. We've already had our initial training for the district and our school site teams, as known as Summer Institute. And the district has identified two high-yield strategies to help meet the needs of all students. So our focus will be on summarizing and questioning. And I do have a phone a friend in the audience that I brought, Ms. Thrash. If she would come up.
We don't want to see her.
Oh, don't crush my heart. She is, if you, if y'all don't know Ms. Thrash, now she's really going to get me. I don't know if I can outrun her, but her plantar fasciitis might hurt, so maybe. She's a wonderful teacher. You need to visit her classroom. I'll tell you, my daughter knew she was a math student when she had Ms. Thrash. So, okay, welcome, Ms. Thrash, from Mahoboth Road. She's going to give just a short little talk around AVID. Please welcome her.
Good afternoon. I had the privilege of attending the AVID Summer Institute last week with different members from the school district. And each day was just so invigorating. The collaboration and just the communication with schools that have implemented AVID lets us know that this is the work that we should be doing in our district. From the facilitators who was telling us what we implement is not going to look like a school that has implemented two years, three years, four years, but that we should take it slow and take what we need and implement it. But talking to the students who had a teacher, a school that was using AVID as a system to help motivate them, advocate for them, was the, was so meaningful. We talked about getting our students to where they need to be, but one of the main things that I learned was that the relationships that you have with students and the high expectations that you set forth for all your students is what propels them to the next level. And I can honestly say, I'm a product of Griffin. I've been in this district teaching for, I stopped counting after 15, maybe 21 years now. And I'm a first-generation college graduate on my mother's side. And so going to college in another state, those skills that we will implement in our district will help those students be more successful. We talked about focus notes, cost of questioning skills, social contracts where the students have buy-in, and just building the relational capacity and advocating for students, teaching them how to advocate for themselves, speak to their teachers, and getting them to realize, a lot of our students don't believe that they are college material. But this system helps us get the tools and the strategies that we need to put our students in those rigorous classes, implement those strategies that shows them how to take notes, how to focus. how to focus, so that they can be successful, whether it's college, whether it's tech, or any career field. So AVID, it was invigorating. I came back and I've already started talking to my principal, we've already started working on our systems, how we're going to greet our students, how we're going to implement this into our, into our daily routine, because it has to be a day-to-day routine, and we have to have buy-in, because when we buy into it, the students buy into it. And one thing that was mentioned from the students were, when we believe, when the teachers believed in those students who were, who didn't look like them, who didn't speak like them, who didn't walk tall, who wasn't from the same tracks from them, when they believed in them, they were able to bring their friends over, their friends got engaged, their friends were highly motivated, their friends wanted to become part of AVID. And so I think that's very important, that we have a population of students who will never see anything other than Griffin. They don't believe that they can go outside of the state and have success. And I think this implementation for our district will change the mindset of our students, but also change the mindset of our parents, because so many of our parents don't believe that their kids can go off and be successful because they've been in Griffin for so long. So that was my takeaway. I'm excited for the new school year to implement the summarizing and questioning, because I think once you implement it in your daily routine with all your students, it changes how they speak, it changes how they think, and it propels them to be leaders where they might not have thought that they could be leaders.
Awesome.
Thrash, Ms. Thrash, what do you teach in sixth grade?
I teach sixth grade now.
Do you?
It's not my passion, but my passion is reading.
Come on now.
And she's teaching reading at summer school, so she's just all-around dynamic. She is going to be an AVID elective teacher in the following year, but she's, she's a wonderful math teacher, I can speak of that personally for my own child.
So this will be implemented in all content areas?
So the district is focused on the summarizing and questioning, so the teachers that attended, so we had teachers in math, science, and social studies. So each teacher that attended a session, so each session provided different tools, but we have a resource toolbox that can help us implement it in all of our content areas. So we will come back and we will focus on those strategies that will help our students better summarize what they're reading, ask those deeper thinking, critical question skills. So it can be, it will be implemented in all content areas, but we'll be focusing on summarizing and questioning.
Okay. What other areas can you focus on other than summarizing and questioning? How many areas are there?
There are so many.
Is it limitless?
It's limitless.
Okay.
It is limitless.
I think that's true, because you, if you, at, at any level, I don't, I don't care whether it's students or adults, or if you don't have the buy-in, it's not going to work. So I totally get that, and I respect that, and I wish you well, and I wish all of our middle school, middle schools well, because that's a age group that I taught, and they just need good friends, good relationships, people that, you know, kids that I used to teach that are now teachers, how, how do we do it, Ms. McDonald? You just love them, that's how you do it, you just love them, and guide them and love them. And I'm, I'm real excited to see your results, and I wish you well, and Rahoboth well, and all of our middle schools well. Thank you for being here today also.
She's, she, I didn't ask her what she said ahead of time, I just said, be ready to talk about AVID. Wonderful job, Ms. Thrash, thank you. And the great thing is after implementing, implementing AVID, I expect to continue to see increases in AP courses, dual enrollment courses, gifted. There's going to be payoffs and dividends from this work. We're investing in teachers with strategies and just super excited about it.
So this is something students are receiving, but they don't know they're receiving it. Is that what I'm hearing? So they're, so they're being blessed, but they don't know they're being blessed?
They actually do, I think, say, talk about AVID.
I mean, do you talk about AVID? Do you talk about the acronym?
You do.
Do you?
You do.
Okay.
I think the first thing that's happening at social contract with students, they have buy-in, and start going, how that's going to operate, these are the things that we expect this college to get there. So I keep having those conversations with students, open the doors for them, one, they can desire to, one, to do what they might think is impossible. So I think that those conversations are, are necessary for students.
Well, we read every day, if you, if you look at the literature currently, all over the country, when we were out for COVID, it's, it seems like students lost their ability to behave properly and respectfully, and the social skills have kind of gone down the tubes, so to speak. So it sounds like this, I'm, I'm a big believer of, of contracts in middle school, the buy-in there, they help, they, they helped me write their own contract many times, and if you don't have buy-in there, you, you won't have buy-in at all, so that's great. Look forward to hearing your results.
Madam Chair, I would like to just add some comments there, you know, when she, Ms. Crawford was up, and she was talking about how the number of students have increased, and so we're, we're glad that as it relates to higher-order thinking skills and critical thinking skills, that our scholars are, you know, doing what needs to be done in order for them to be successful. And also just want to thank Superintendent Simmons, Dr. Taylor, and Ms. Crawford for their swift response to concern that I brought up last year concerning the number of black children who were identified as gifted scholars. I love the initiative of having a faculty member who is responsible, responsibility is to go into the schools and help teachers identify more gifted scholars. It is of the utmost importance to identify these scholars as gifted, so that we can ensure that these scholars are being stretched and accelerated appropriately for college and career readiness. In addition to that, I am also pleased to see the opportunity for all scholars to take AP dual enrollment courses, and the addition to having the AVID strategies to increase rigor in their studies and travels as scholars. With these opportunities, our scholars who are not identified as gifted still will have an opportunity to be stretched, to be pulled, and academically challenged to receive the best education possible here in Griffin Spalding County Schools. Shout out to Ms. Thrash, who I've known for a very long time. She couldn't help me to quite understand math, but you did a great job doing it. Thank you so much to yourself and other teachers and other administrators who were able to attend the Summer AVID Institute. To our superintendent, thank you so much for what you do to ensure that our scholars and that our staff have the best resources possible. Being since your tenure, since you're coming here, we can just list the number of programs that have really helped our district to be successful, and we see things like this. And I can tell you, I can tell just hearing from Ms. Thrash and on her personally, that you are passionate about your work, and in the follow-up, look forward to coming, coming out to Rahoboth Road to see you in action as a sixth-grade math teacher, because I really appreciate your heartfelt remarks and testimony as to how the Summer Institute Conference helped you. So thank you so much to everybody involved.
Thank you, thank you again. All right, Ms. Austin?
Good evening. It's just one minute. Now, Chairperson?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
The esteemed board members and our own Superintendent Dr. Simmons, thank you so very much for the opportunity to come before you to provide a brief update on ARP S R three. And just briefly, this page summarizes or refreshes us on the congressional legislation which authorizes a set aside at the use of ARP S R three funding. And here we wanted to just bring this back before you, just as refresher, you all have seen this before, last summer and a couple times throughout the year, just to be able to give you a little bit of background and feedback regarding the legislation that drives the funding. And I also wanted to share as part of that congressional knowledge is that the timeframe for this particular funding stream is March, of course, because it was enacted in March of 2021 through September of 2024 at its maximum time, that's what carryover as well. Again, just another refresher, as our board members have seen this before, just to remind everyone of the intent and purpose of our American Rescue Plan funding stream, just to ensure that we have this out before us, and reminding us that last summer, we did work collaboratively to create our district's plan, which was submitted to Godot. It was developed through the work of many of us within our district on the teams to ensure that our ARP S R funds were aligned to the use of funds with our S R requirements. You'll see that our priority, priority areas, excuse me, was safe return to schools, learning loss, and delivering high-quality professional development. And these particular areas of priority do fall within our ARP S R three use of fund categories. And you may remember before that we had a slide that showed all of those areas of nutrition, at-risk learning, distance and remote learning, mental and physical health, supplemental learning, facilities and equipment, professional development and continuity of services. Those are just some of the areas that we have discussed before, and you'll see as we go through where our expenditures lie between those areas that, that we have already in our particular budget. I'm excited about this slide. Not quite there yet. So on the left side of the slide, you will see our L E A requirements for use of funds that has been prescribed to all districts from our legislation. And twenty percent of all budgets have to be committed to learning loss. And we're excited to say that here in our district, we have thirty percent of our budgeted funds to learning loss. And through that, we have been able to provide a number of opportunities to our schools, to our students within our schools this year. We were excited to have extended learning time opportunities provided through all of our schools, whether it was before school, after school, Saturday school, and even virtual school, through the use of some of our learning loss funds for our students throughout this year. So we were excited to be able to provide that as well. Alongside that, throughout the year, our board approved the use of funds to be able to procure tutoring services for our students to have personalized tutoring with F E V tutors, as well as with Apple Roth. So we're excited about that as well. So we are certainly at a minimum, meeting and exceeding the requirement when it comes to the use of funds within our district, as we have budgeted and approved at the Godot The next slide that you see before you is just essentially represents our expenditures is what we have spent our money on thus far. And so we wanted to make sure that you all were able to see this information in the rolled-up form, as you see it through our function levels. And we are well, we feel like within the expenditure rate, one difference of these particular funds is that the timeframe of the budget is not on an annual basis, a fifteen-month grant. This particular funding stream is over the life of the grant, and so that will be the two-to-three-year life of the grant. So you'll see the expenditures continue to accumulate over that timeframe, because it's not in a fifteen-month period, okay? And so right now, we're at about twenty-four and a half percent of expenditures against the grant amount. And so the next two slides are just excerpts from our application from last summer. That's just a refresher of how we dedicated our funds based on the areas and activities within this particular grant. And that's just there for your information.
Austin, could I, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What, just give me a synopsis of what, what's included in the Community Services Code thirty-three hundred.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Let me go back up, Mr. Holmes. Oh, that's a great question. So in the Community Services Operations Code, this past May, the governor, as you all know, allowed for supplements to our staff within, across the state and within our district. And so, of course, to be fair, you all allowed, and we're thankful for your approval, that all staff was able to be able to be a part of that, that blessing, per se. And so we had to be able to code that back to that particular staff's coding. And so that's what that is, that's for that staff's coding, but it's for this grant. So that's just for that supplement. Does that make sense?
So, so, so are there other, are there other, are there, get it out, leader? Are there other monies, and what could it be used for?
Are there other monies in the grant, or in?
In, in this.
In that one line item?
Yes.
No, sir, that, I did check on that. That's all that is, is just for that supplement and funding for those particular staff persons.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I asked that question as well, to make sure we were accurate on that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, that's a great question, thank you. So that's there for your information, the excerpts from our application that was shared last summer. And just really quickly also, the six-month review is a programmatic requirement for all recipients of ARP S R three funding. And so we have recently just concluded our second six-month review with the Georgia Department of Education, and so we wanted to bring before you just some of the samples that were provided to be able to satisfy that requirement. And so before you, one of the examples that we shared was particularly to be able to align our decision-making to the areas of our application and the intent and purpose of the grant. So one example of an expenditure aligns to the learning loss use of funds category, particularly at the school level, with your approval of Griffin High School's restorative practices programs through the works. And so we wanted to make sure that we were sharing how your decision-making was in place and share it with the public. So you'll see our agenda from that meeting. In addition to the agenda, we also have a copy of our board brief where that was also shared out as well, and that was shared with Godot from our transparency standpoint. That's one example. And a second example that was shared and that satisfied that requirement was an expenditure which aligns to distance and remote learning use of funds category, which our board approved for additional interactive panels at your January fourth, 2022 meeting. And so we wanted to make sure that we were aligning and be able to easily see and tie back to our application and the intent and purpose of our funding through your decision-making as a board, which of course would certainly benefit and does benefit our classrooms and our staff and teachers. And there's our board brief that was shared publicly as well. Just about done. So Dr. Taylor and the team and the superintendent and I want to make sure that we share next steps. And so myself and Mr. Jones and our team work very closely together to ensure that we are maximizing the use of all of our grant funds, to ensure that they are appropriately utilized to meet the needs of our students, staff, and definitely within our schools and at the district level. So we're making sure that we're implementing all program requirements and that we're monitoring the expenditure rate and usage of federal funds. And so we do that continually, and those are our next steps. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Austin, for that update.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Battle, twenty-one, twenty-two, end-of-year update?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Simmons. Thank you for allowing me to present this report regarding end-of-year information as it relates to employee retention and recruitment. Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Okay, so our district non-negotiables, we will be professional, accountable, and communicate effectively. Our focus area, literacy, enrollment, attendance, and discipline. Our mission and vision, our vision, distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools. Our mission, to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. This, of course, is our roadmap to success, this drives our work, we have our focus areas and our pillars of leadership, teaching, and learning. And I will start off with giving you some historical information regarding our resignations by school year. And we took this information back to the sixteen-seventeen school year, where we had right over two hundred resignations. And you can see progressively the trends, we went up, and then we had a decrease in the nineteen-twenty school year, of course, that was the year of the pandemic. We saw an increase for 2021. And this year, we finished up the school year at the time of the publication of this presentation at 336 resignations. This includes all positions, not just teaching. It includes school nurses, secretary. So those are all of our resignations for this 2122 school year. We've given you a little information as to the reasons, what people communicated through us by way of filling out their resignation paperwork. 66 individuals indicated that they're going to another school district. 10 people found they just put another job. 231 people were resigning for personal reasons. Nine people received promotions outside of our school district. 20 people were relocating, and one had to relocate with her spouse. So in our totals there, let me include this, we have had additional resignations not added to the 336. So we have had 57 people retire by way of service, retirement, or disability. We've had six terminations and two non-renewals. So in total, we have 401 employees leaving our district this school year. So we've given you some information by category, and I think this was as good information as well. We have 179 of those resignations are teachers, 59 are paraprofessionals, 13 are school clerks or secretarial. We lost six school nurses this year, nine custodians, 13 administrators, two technology specialists, 17 bus drivers, two school bus monitors, and two school nutrition workers. I've shared with you historical retention data for teachers, going back in 1819, our retention rate was at 77%. And again, 1920 was a good year. We had a 92% retention rate. Then you can see the decline, 2021, 84%. And this year, we're wrapping up the year with a 75% retention rate for teachers. So we have started, we've put a strong emphasis on our exit interview process as well as our employee engagement. 26% of the people leaving the district completed the exit survey. That's not as high as we would have liked it, but we have new focus coming up for the school year. 36% of our employees did complete an engagement survey in the fall, and 34% didn't complete engagement survey in the spring. And that information is very useful in helping us understand what we need to do for retention and recruitment purposes. Mr. Holmes?
So, so what's the process, Ms. Battle, for anyone resigning or whatever, to do the, the exit interview? What, what's that process?
Right, so we, we took a twofold approach this year. Typically, we would send out a survey, and we were using Google Forms, and we recognized that people did not really like to use the Google Form platform. So we switched over to Survey Monkey this spring, as well as we have started to do face-to-face exit interviews. It's better to sit down in front of someone, go through some questions, and let them give you very candid feedback. We started the face-to-face exits later in the year than I would have liked, and I think we, we can, we'll start earlier as time permits. But that's why we have 26%. So we do it by way of electronic response as well as face-to-face interviews.
Virginia, here, the face-to-face, that, that's what I would prefer and what I'm used to, because as we see, people are not going to put that high on their priority list if they've resigned. So I, I'm pleased to hear we're doing some face-to-face.
To date, Ms. Battle, how many face-to-face have you had? I think last time you gave us a little over 100, as I recall, face-to-face.
Face, I'd have to actually look back and count. I would say of these numbers, at least 50% of those were face-to-face. It was a matter of trying to get them in. We had to kind of split up the work, but we had at least 50% of those actually come in and sit down and talk to us. So key takeaways, and you can read these articles at your convenience, but I did include Based on the feedback by way of survey or face-to-face conversation, employees feel like they are not part of the decision-making process. That was overarching a thing that we kept hearing throughout our process. And I've included an article for you to read at your leisure while we should listen to our employees. Teachers would like an opportunity to have time for planning. They want more planning time. So that was something else that came through that we wanted to be mindful of. And we've given a TED Talk about meaningful meetings. Another theme that came through, student behavior came up again and again. And then also a breakdown in communication, in the way we communicate through, throughout the district. There was not any one person blamed, but the way we communicate was something that we, we heard repeatedly.
So with, with these takeaways, okay, what's the plan, I guess, is my question?
So we do, we have plans, actually, and we're going to talk about that further along in the presentation.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, so we also wanted to share an area, we, we count this as small growth, but it's important to us. In the fall, when we asked the question, am I involved with opportunities to provide input on issues that affect my job? Only about 63% felt that, they strongly agreed with that. But we did present the survey again at the end of the year, and we did see some gain. We were at 66.5%. So we did, we listened, and we try and implement some strategies to make changes, and I'll give you more specifics. And so as part of our retention strategy, in addition to our retention and recruitment specialists, we do have what we're going to implement, and thank you for approving that, the Classified Salary Study. We hope that that will help retain our teacher induction program. We met about that today. We're really building that up. We still have our Quality Leaders Academy. If you see some people left our district to get promotions elsewhere, we want to build capacity on our leaders within our district so they can stay here. Again, we have our Grow Our Own Scholarship, $1,500. We have intern teachers, where we can build on teachers and give them training and experience. Employee Feedback Survey for Decision-Making. So if people feel like their voice is not being heard, a good example, we were trying to find out, how can we give an opportunity for more planning? How can we have more time for planning? So we pushed out a survey, and we took that feedback, and based on that feedback, we were able to build in more time for planning for the 2223 school year. So that's the first thing we're doing. We're trying to get them involved. We're asking for feedback. We really want to hear their suggestions so we can try and make implementation. Again, additional time for planning is something we're going to do for 2223. We'll continue with those engagement surveys, and I think we may have to move those to a face-to-face opportunity as well. Employee referral stipends, that has been an ongoing initiative of the district. That's not new. School retention plans, which feed into our district retention plan, the things that we can do at the school level, feed up to the central office level so we can all be on the same page. We continue with our state interviews and exit interviews. So what additional questions do you have?
I don't think I have a question. I just have a concern, because I, I keep up with the literature. I read a lot of articles from all over the country, and I, I do know that teachers are tired. I do know that probably everyone in this room is tired. I mean, we've lived through something that we've never had to live through before. I get all that, but we have, we all have to be adults and move forward. I'm a big proponent of planning time. I get tired of seeing last-minute meetings in the library during my planning time. I experienced that myself. Sometimes I lost my own planning time. So if we're asking teachers to take care of student A, B, C, D, E, F, G that are on every spectrum known to man, then we have to give planning time to our teachers. Because we are asking a lot of our teachers, not only in Griffins Spalding, but all over this country. And to continually take planning time away from teachers, in my opinion, is a real deficit for the people that we have hired to do the job we have hired them to do. I don't say this as a former teacher. I say this as an individual sitting in this position because it's really difficult work. And now it's gotten, gotten even more difficult because students basically haven't been in school for two years, year and a half to two, and the behavior issues are really high. I, I just really worry, not only about recruiting, but retaining teachers, because teachers are, it's not just a problem to Griffins Spalding, it's happening all over the country, as you well know, as we all know. But I want to be one of those districts that we, we specialize in taking care of our employees. And that could, we could all go around the room, well, how would you, Mr. Ballard? How would you, what would that look like for you? How would that look like for you, Ms. Austin? We've got to come up with a way to be sure that our employees are, are made to feel special in the area that they have been hired to work. And I'm going to tell you, it's not going to get any better if we continue to take planning time away from teachers. Because I've done it, and it was difficult. And former teachers in this room have done it, and it was difficult. So I'm just making it known that, and, and all of you know, I'm a teacher advocate, I will be until I have no breath left. We've got to take care of our teachers.
Ms. Battle, I, I'm just curious, you, you've, you've been here for a minute now to get acclimated, get the lay of the land, for lack of a better term. What is your observation? And what would you like to see in the Griffins Spalding County school system? What would you like to see implemented and done from an HR professional perspective?
I would like, and this year has been especially tough with shortages. I would like consideration to, would we have to take teachers to cover classes to look at some type of extended day or just something? And I know everything is not about money, but I do recognize they're giving up, you know, they're, they may not have time to complete their planning to cover a class. So if we would consider some kind of extended day payment that will help offset the time that they're taking away for their planning, I think that would be helpful. I would like to see just that protected, where if they're, if they have a scheduled Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, let's identify, you know, let's use this particular day where we're going to let the teachers use that time for their planning. And, and we can do that if, you know, throughout the district. We, we just need to do it district-wide. So those are two things that I would like to see that I think would help tremendously. You see, we worked in an opportunity for someone to help us with mental health counseling for our teachers. There's a lot of burnout, frustration. If we can have those resources more readily available, I think that will help us for next year as well.
Well, and another thing, when I was still in the classroom, we have to model that we're willing to do the work ourselves. In my career, I never saw too many leaders in a building that would go to a classroom. So we have to model what we expect of others. Does that make sense? And I'm not saying it doesn't happen here, but I know in a lot of places, it doesn't happen. And I think on the recruitment side, if you could sit down with a potential teacher that, that we may hire, and you can say, you will get your planning time, that's, that's probably going to ring a few bells. Me personally, I'm concerned about us having enough bus drivers. Me personally, I'm concerned about us having enough teachers. Me personally, I'm concerned about what you just described. I've been the recipient of having two classes in my room before. I mean, there's not a teacher in this room that hasn't experienced that. And I know emergencies come up, I, I get all that, but, you know, we're just asking a lot. I, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just gonna, I'm sharing my concerns because August the 4th will be here before we can blink an eye, and I've got a lot of concerns. And it's not only here, it's everywhere.
One last question, Ms. Battle. I'm glad you brought up about the mental health piece. I had made, I had made a note, and I wanted to ask, with, with that mental health person, how are we, how are we going to address someone that has possibly been identified as being in a mental health crisis? Or can they be mandated to go and get that help? I'm, I'm used to that from where I've, I've worked. How is, just explain, give me a little synopsis, or give us a synopsis of how that is going to work, because sometimes, you know, other, other staff members or their, their direct report may see those telltale signs of a mental health crisis. So, so will we have the ability to mandate that person go and seek counseling or mental health therapy?
Yeah, and, and we, we, we work in that manner now, once someone is identified in crisis after an assessment by a trained professional. We do require them to get what we call a fitness-for-duty. They have to be evaluated and go if there's going to be inpatient or outpatient treatment. But we do require them to go and, go and have a fitness-for-duty evaluation complete. And we submit their job description very clear, what those stresses might be, what the job description entails, and then the professional would have to sign off that that person is able to return to work.
And so just to take it a little further, that mental health person, how, how are they going to fit in that process? How, how would they be utilized?
So they're going to be our point of contact. So if we, if someone comes to work and agitated or appears to be stressed and unable to function, then we can use our mental health person to go and do an initial assessment and evaluation for that employee. And then based on their expertise, we would need to know, do they need to be referred to a hospital or to a clinic? And at that point, once that referral is made, they will have to have a fitness-for-duty exam and assessment when they come back to work.
I'm pleased to, to see that, and I think that's going to be valuable, a valuable resource to have in-house. So thank you, whoever brought that to the table.
Do we have any way of, those that we have lost, to contact them a year or so down the road? And, and I'll give you a good example. I spoke to a teacher recently that has left, and we had a nice conversation, very honest conversation, but I'll probably be back. And I went, well, we will welcome you with open arms. And I thought it was just kind of a cool thing for, for that person to say, but do we, do we track? Can we invite back? Can we?
We leave the door open. Let's put it that way. But, so we would have to maintain or put together a plan. We can look at our database for the people who've left and then do outreach efforts to see if they want to come back. And, and some people have told me the same thing. They, they plan to return at some point, but for whatever reason, they're leaving now. But we do tell them that as long as they're in good standing, you know, they're welcome to reapply, and we hope that they would come back this way at some point.
And of the 57 retirements?
We, we have a retiree meeting tomorrow to try and see if we can get.
Knowing you as I do, I knew you did, but I, these are, these would be really good to get back in the classroom?
And you're welcome to come, to come to that meeting as well. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow to talk to our newly-retired educators to see how we can get them back in a classroom, substitute teaching, maybe 49%. So we're trying, we're reaching out to our retirees as well.
That's very good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And I want you to understand to everyone in the room and those that may be, I'm not being argumentative, I'm just, I'll always be a teacher. That's it. Thank you, Ms. Battle.
Madam Chair, I just have some questions and a couple of statements as well. First of all, I just want to say to Ms. Battle, thank you so much for all that you do. A lot of great things have happened since you've been in our district, and so I do want to say thank you to that. To echo Ms. McDonald's points about teacher resignation is not an issue that's only affecting GSES, it's all across the country. And we're trying to see, we're seeing this trend and see how that we can do better in our practices and how we can be innovative in our strategies to retain teachers in our district. So just to go back over, and I know we've seen them before, but to refresh my memory and maybe some of my colleagues, what are some of the questions that are asked on the exit interview?
So we have, and of course, one of the first questions is, you know, is there anything we can do to get you to reconsider? You know, maybe a transfer, maybe go to a different, you know, school. And we do ask, what are the challenges? You know, what challenges did you experience? What did you face? We go forward and we want to know about the professional learning. How did that, how did they feel that was useful or helpful? We ask about our technology, some of the things that, are we innovative, cutting edge? Are we competitive? But I actually have those questions here, so we ask some things like, how would they rate their experience here in Griffin Spalding? Can they give me specific examples of what, you know, what compelled you to leave? You know, especially people who have been here for many years. You know, why, why now?
But are they seriously, are they telling the truth?
So, and you know, some people I think were very honest with me. See, that face-to-face gives you more of an honest response.
Body language and.
Yeah, and then some of those online responses were very honest as well. I hope that they're being truthful, because that's how we can grow and get better. But I have to, and I tell them, this is a confidential process, you know, feel free to speak freely. We'll use this information just truly to grow as a district.
So in order for us to be able to improve, when you look at the 336, you know, people that have left, regardless if it's resignation, if it's retirement, from the responses as you are gathering these exit interviews, how much of it, how much of it can we control in our district?
The plan, we could, if I could, how do I quantify it? The four items that I pointed out were the items that recurred, that we heard the most of, that were reported. So planning, I think there's a way we can, we can work around, we can work through that as a district. I know that we are putting a lot of measures in place to address student behavior. I think we have some control over that as well. Communication, I think we can improve that, that, you know, so those four areas that we pointed out, we do have some control over that.
And so as, because when I think about communication, it's in multiple ways. The district communicating to the schools and, you know, staff. Then it's the schools actually communicating to the staff. So out of it, as it relates to communication, what can we control? And can your office, along with the superintendent's office, provide a report to the board to see where a lot of the breakdowns are, if it is communication? Because we are here to communicate effectively. And so if that is an issue, that is something that we can fix. But as it relates to some of the other stuff, the way that you grouped it on in the presentation, on board with all the retention strategies that you've listed, those are really good things. But I just feel that, and this is some time maybe for, to see if there's a better seeking team, the HR could probably provide, to see what other strategies are out there. I know that when you look at other school districts that may be either our size or bigger, as I thumb through Twitter, Instagram, and look at what other districts are doing, I do feel that there's some room of improvement for our district. And I'll be more than happy to talk offline with you and to share with you what I've seen from other school districts. But I would like a more comprehensive report and study as to why they are leaving and then what our district, if some of the same issues keep coming up, then what are we doing as a district to address what those issues are? So that was the question, right? Or was that?
I think it was a statement, but I understood what you were asking.
So I guess, as you have, and the reason why I'm asking is because I'm, it's mind-boggling. Teachers are leaving all across the United States. Whether if you are a teacher or administrator, people in the educational field are tired. I mean, just today, I spoke to a teacher that resigned. And it was no fault of the district, but just the way that they feel and, you know, choosing themselves, their mental health and self-care, which is, I tell anybody, that is the most important, because you cannot be your best self if you're not well-rested. You have to be your best self in order to teach our scholars, in order to interact with employees. And so I love the direction the HR department is heading. I love the feedback that you give us. And I believe that your department can make some meaningful changes. It's about the resources that we provide to our staff. It's about the resources, and also I think, as it relates to scholars as well, because it's a human resource as well. So planning, of course, is one of those major areas of concerns. And so as we continue to, us five pull our heads together, superintendent, part of the government's team, and all departments, just to see what we can do better to improve our district. We all just want to be better. We all just want to improve. And we've seen the, I've seen it, colleagues have seen, the great things that you have brought to our district. And we're looking forward to more great stuff. But I just feel that there's more to this. It's more diving in, and you're not going to be able to get to, and I say it all the time, you're not going to be able to get to and think through this stuff through a work session. We have to have more time to dig into it. And so just thank you so much for the presentation, and I'm looking forward to getting more feedback as to why people are leaving and how the better-seeking team can help us to retain our staff here in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
At the risk of prolonging and exacerbating the discussion, I do think it's important that I say something. As the superintendent, chief executive officer of this organization, I take it and I take it seriously. I appreciate the board's perspective relative to the national issue relative to shortages. And I'll say shortages in all aspects. The blessing and the burden of being in this space in the moment is that, you know, education is still people-driven. It requires people in order for us to provide the service that we're striving to provide. And then ultimately, in this particular setting, K-12 public education, there's a bottom line. We don't necessarily like to talk about it because it shouldn't be about it. But if it weren't about it, they wouldn't publish test scores and graduation rates. So at the end of the day, in this very community, our staff, our schools are judged based on those numbers and those letters. I'll share with you, that is the burden. Because in the interim, the adults, much like Ms. Thrash, is postured to try and figure out who's first. Herself, the community that she's serving, the children that she's teaching. But ultimately, she recognizes she's going to be judged, the school in which she teaches is going to be judged based on those outcomes. Where we are in the moment, I do think there's an opportunity to be innovative. And I do believe that it's going to require some conversation, as Mr. Brown talked about, with regards to this governance team. If we are positioned to say we will treat and ensure that people are first, then we move into that direction. But it will sacrifice some things. But ultimately, in the conversations that I'm having regionally and nationally with the firms that you've allowed me to contract with for these very discussions, what we're trying to do is take not necessarily this business approach, but this medical approach. What are the symptoms? And as, you know, you've mentioned, people are tired, people are stressed, people are overwhelmed, healthcare is an issue, there's a workforce shortage, all of those things. And so we will take that on. I do agree that we have to find a way to find, and ensure that our employees are being candid. I'll share with you that we expect information to be the truth. But I'm not naive. I know that people struggle with telling the truth. Going back to Mr. Holmes' question with regards to how do we roll out this exit interview, there was a fear and a concern that someone would try and figure out who said what. I've said it for a year and a half now, we are who we are. And as long as we have adults worried more about thinking that I'm going to try and figure out what their email address is, I'm not going to be able to get to the reality of what's causing them to, one, leave us. But I'll share with you, I've asked Ms. Battle to also double down on what's causing people to stay. Because if we're not careful, we'll have to virtually teach everyone, because we will present that it's impossible to be effective here in Griffin Spalding, and I would disagree with that. We will have a distinctive brand, we will develop strong leaders, and we will operate great schools. If come Hades or Highwater, that's going to happen. It is what it is, and I won't, I won't waver in that regard. So it's tough to give of yourself for the betterment of someone else. That's what our folks do. You are all products of public education. I regret that the scrutiny and the concerns happen to be doubled down with this population of employees. My personal frustration is that there may be one who doesn't believe or isn't sure of the value that we place on them. That's my anger, not at anyone at this board. And so I apologize for my emotions, but I think at the end of the day, there's still 9,000-plus students, umpteen families, who are relying on this school system to make a better way for the livelihood that they desire. I don't want you on this governance team to ever wonder or question the level of commitment from this staff. We're better than most people realize. We're not as good as we will be, and we don't receive an ounce of the credit we deserve. I'm not saying that from you, but in the event that I have an employee listening, I don't want the sun to go down and they think that you nor I or the staff holds them to the utmost degree of loyalty and value. I'm a product of public education. Despite the woes and ills of the community, it was someone else who partnered with my parent to see me through. If for no other reason I commit to this board on my watch and as long as I'm superintendent, we will see it through. There won't be a storm strong enough that'll cause us to waver. There won't be a level of scrutiny or magnifying glass strong enough that'll cause us to back down from the challenges that we're faced with. But if I'm honest with you, it is frustrating, because you're right, Madam Chair, August is coming. But as God is my witness, we'll be here when it gets here. And as God is my witness, and for those of you, whether you're faithful or not, I am, and that's the one that I'm speaking about, we will be ready to serve every child and every family that shows up in these schools. Just as sure as I'm sitting here bald-headed with freckles, I do not, will not back down from that challenge of serving these children. And I don't want you to ever let anyone make you feel like that we will. We know it's tough. I appreciate your leadership in the moment, but I'm compelled to just remind you and just that one employee who may be listening and wondering, should I stay in Griffin Spalding? And the one new employee that we've just hired and wondering, should I go to Griffin Spalding? The answer is yes, resoundingly yes, because the work that we do is no greater calling. It has no higher value on this planet. And no time more than this one is it going to be necessary that we recognize, however we do it, the work that our folks are doing is life-changing. And so again, as I think about my journey, as I think about the journey of all of those in this room, as I think about the kids who've graduated, the kids who are coming into school, as I think about the families who aren't quite sure, how will they create the lifestyle that they desire for their children? I bear that burden proudly. I look forward to the opportunity to serve. We'll get better at the things that we know we need to get better at. I'm going to ask that you stand firm with me. I'm going to ask that you continue to stand in front of this staff, deflect the negativity, deflect the distraction, and let us, let us work. And work with us, because I assure you, just as sure as I'm sitting here, five years from now, there will be school districts coming to Griffin, asking, "How did you do it?" I've done it before, I'll do it again. I promise you, we'll get through this, but we'll get through it together, and we'll do it for the betterment of other people's children, which is no greater feeling. And so again, board members, I apologize for my emotions. It's who I am. It's what I do. You all know I have degrees in everything but education. But this is how I got here. And so I get it, and we'll make it through. This staff knows, when I see the storm, I stop what I'm doing and I turn and I face it. I know we're in a storm. But whoever's in that storm with me has got two options. They go the way that we go and serve these kids, or they fall victim to whatever happens in the result. But I'm not going to let anyone or anything get in the way of me serving these children. And those that we've employed have committed to that. I don't want to lose employees. We're going to find good people. We're going to develop and train them. We're going to give them the skills that they need to serve the kids. You heard one of our teachers talk about that. And truth be told, that's where it is. Schools will be clean because that guy's sitting here. Children will be fed because that guy's sitting here. Teachers will have the resources because they're sitting here. And this community will be better because you're sitting here. You mark my words? I yield the rest of my time, Madam Chair.
Dr. Simmons, I have to say this. Thank you for showing your heart. Sometime, it's thankless to be in this position that we're in as board members. You as superintendent, you and your respected jobs because. You as superintendent, you and your respected jobs because we have some people that have the ideology that we don't care, that we're just here for the money. If y'all hadn't heard, I I I just made my first million being a board member. But I I thank you for showing your heart. There's no replacement for that. And for those naysayers that may be watching, looking for a scab to pick at, looking at for something to find wrong, trust me when I say this, you you have a governance team and employees that cares for this community, our students, and education. So I I thank you for for just sharing your heart, and there's no need to apologize for sharing your heart. Thank you, sir.
I also wanted to say thank you. We're doing something right because we just had graduates from Griffin High and Spalding High receive over five million dollars worth in scholarships to move on. That's pretty remarkable, and we've already talked with Mr. Pugh about making that public. You know, when I worked in high school two years, the counselors would always have a a moment during the graduation ceremony where they said, and our graduates this year, I think it was Spalding two point something and Griffin three point something, the public needs to know that. So we're doing something right, and I agree with Mr. Simmons. We've got to stay the course, keep our head up, and move forward. And I'm honored that I'm here and I'll get to see that, the way you were saying that. It's not about me, it's never been about me, as he said, it's it's about the the kids and the students and the parents that we serve. And all of us up here are here for that very reason and that reason only. So, Dr. Simmons. Just goes back to during the interview process when we got it down to three people, as I recall, and I remember Centelle and I were sitting up on the, we were at UGA Griffin, we were sitting in that room and we were up on the the top shelf, so to speak, and
Nosebleed.
Nosebleed section. Centelle and I looked at each other at the same time, not once, not twice, but probably three or four times when this man was speaking. A lot of school board members never have an opportunity to hire a superintendent. I'm honored that I had that opportunity. I'm honored this board had that opportunity because ever since then, our wheel's been rolling in the right direction. And a lot of you in this room don't know it, but when we put the names on the board, oh my God, the names are the same, other than maybe one or two. So my point is that we're more alike than we're different. We're all trying to get on the right bus to get to the right destination, and this man can do it. He's going to do it, and we're going to help him get there. So, Dr. Simmons, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Battle, I guess you're done, I don't really know. Dr. Warren, good to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Want to come before you to provide a summary of some operation work that occurred this school year to support our students and scholars as well as our employees. As stated earlier, we have three non-negotiables that I have to remember by acronym PACE, always be professional, accountable, and communicate effectively. When it comes to our focus, we focus on leads, literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline, and solving. At the bottom here, you see our results parameters. A person's experiences impacts their beliefs, which informs their actions, which eventually will lead to certain results. Also, we operate by a mindset of see it, own it, solve it, and do it. This past school year, one of the initiatives that I led was the creation of our five-year continuous improvement plan with the support of GSBA and GLISI. And that resulted in a brand-new vision, mission, vision, having a distinctive brand, strong leaders in great schools, mission is to empower each student, each student to graduate college and career-ready. What you see on this slide is our strategy map, and this is the centerpiece of our work of that five-year plan, which involves seventy-plus external and internal stakeholders, and a kind of wide online survey to gather the input from our our stakeholders. As you can see, we have an instructional vision for student success, which means high-quality instructional practices where students are engaged in reading, writing, speaking, and solving on a great level, working tasks in his classroom daily. In the green here, you see our goal area starting at the bottom going up. We want to have an organizational and operational efficiency, which we believe results in a high-performing staff, which supports family and community engagement, which in the end leads to student achievement. And we have three pillars that I work on, leadership, teaching, and learning. The blue boxes represent performance objectives. Each goal area in green has three performance objectives in blue. And on the the right there, you see the the gray boxes, those are our strategic priorities. So as schools develop their continuous improvement plan, they're aligned to our strategic priorities. So everything is built upon this wide, this strategy map. So this was a great accomplishment for us to create a new five-year plan to guide our efforts here in the school district. Secondly, from our office, we implemented playbooks to facilitate projects as well as to work. To to give you a sports analogy, when I think of our great coaches like Kirby Smart up at UGA, I know Mr. Shepherd would agree me, agree with me on that, Steve Kerr, Golden State Warriors head coach, great coaches have playbooks in our teams, know them well, and they implement them and execute them to result in success. Playbooks for us translate vision and strategy into tactics. They define what must be done to win the game and who will do it. They look at gap closures, the fine areas where performance will be measured and metrics will be used. It communicates to our team members. Everyone knows the status of their work and our assignments. It drives best practices. We're going to use, go about doing our work in a standardized method to foster continuous improvement efforts. And that also clarifies the roles and integrates team efforts. Defining roles and responsibilities helps to assure critical actions are not overlooked and supports crossover work between teams. So we have four playbooks. We have the Great Opening of Schools playbook, July and August, which I'm developing now, that will start next month. We have the Set the Tone playbook, which is implemented from September to January. We have the Plan for Next Year playbook, which is February through April. And now, when coming to the end of the successfully closing of the school year in May and June. So those are our our playbooks that run the entire gamut of a school year. So each division department plays a role in that playbook. They have plays or work that's executed and monitored and throughout the school year. And as these playbooks relate to each other, I Set the Tone playbook informs our planning for work for next year and our continuous improvement. So some of the position you see, I've been monitoring attendance and various metrics related to attendance, and I Set the Tone playbook, it informs planning for next year in terms of a needed desire for an attendance officer. So this is a brief example. Lastly, Board of Educational Policy Review, one of your main functions again is to set the policy for the board, for the school district to upgrade by. And we had a goal of reviewing for this school year thirty-eight policies. And I would say that thus far, we reviewed thirty-seven of them. So we have a ninety-seven percent rate where those policies were were reviewed. Thank you, that is a great achievement for both our internal excellent review that always posted online for Assembly on the website for our stakeholders to give input. And those policies go through a first read, a second read, and BOE approval. So tonight, Mr. Harper presented one, well, two policies. One of them was one we had planned on reviewing, as I stated earlier, one of them was brand-new. So at the end of this fiscal year, we'll we'll receive, review thirty-eight policies, and then a four-year period, the board will have reviewed their entire suite of policies that we operate by. Administrative Services. Want to tip of the hat to to these guys, Transportation, Nutrition, Athletics, Facilities, and Safety. It is it's really challenging and at times working through a pandemic and all the nuances involved, but these guys did, and ladies did Yoma's work. Proud to report in Transportation that we had air purifiers installed on one hundred and fifteen buses, Mr. Harris made a video to that, to that effect. We also purchased individual purifiers for all, air purifiers for all of our bus drivers. And for one hundred and fifteen buses, we also installed navigation tablets and rags to track the buses. As relates to nutrition, a big shout-out to Mr. Will in the audience here, who led a successful administrative review. Well, the the team came down from Godot, spent several days with us back in February to review our processes and procedures and gave us a seal of approval. We switched this past year to the CEP, the Community Eligibility Program, where all of our students eat breakfast free, breakfast, lunch, and after school snack at no cost to them. So that was a a big accomplishment for our district, increased participation from fifty percent to eighty percent, a thirty percent gain in more kids eating breakfast, lunch, and snacks in one school year. Also, one of the positive as it relates to a reimbursement cost ratio, that's big for us, first time in six years. And also, Mr. Willis is managing a million-dollar grant in funds for various activities to support our school nutrition program. When it comes to facilities, again, beginning the pandemic, we're able to install on all of our facilities the bipolar ionization units to 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 clean the air, so to speak, touchless water fountains, renovate the auditorium, and also this summer, some of the work has begun on our latest plots to include renovations of Conroe Middle School and the Seabuilding, where finance and human resources will eventually be moved, hopefully next month in July or shortly thereafter. Also, in athletics, we're able to to launch a flag football program for our young ladies at Griffin and Spalding High Schools that will kick off this school year. As relates to safety, we we're able to replace our older cameras and to install three hundred and four new high-definition cameras in all of our campuses to include AZK and Mainstay. And again, dealing with the pandemic, we're able to purchase a listing of some of these items for personal protective equipment as relates to hand sanitizer, gloves, masks, and things of that nature. Communications and partnerships, it's always important for us to tell our story, so to speak. If you don't tell it, somebody else will, and and they chances are they won't get it just right, and then you're at their mercy. So we've implemented some new reporting tools to tell our story through billboards and videos. Proud to say that we produced fifty videos this past school year, and some of our new events include slicing with the superintendent where Dr. Simmons goes out and and has lunch and congregates and communicates with our high school student leaders. We expanded the Rearman Read Program, which is a big hit, the Made in Griffin event that occurred last month, as well as the Partners in Education Cornhole Tournament. Additionally, in terms of sharing valuable information, newsletters that we created, we have a weekly newsletter to our employees, as well as a quarterly community newsletter that goes out, and proud to say that each one of those has a a video message from our superintendent. So they hear the voice and see Dr. Simmons as our leader communicating with them weekly and our community on a quarterly basis. We we also expanded some business and industry partnerships, and we rolled out Less Talk. That's a new customer service platform that encourages engagement from our stakeholders. And I'm proud to say that thus far, our average customer score is that they rate us is like a nine out of ten, some respond, some don't. Resolution time on average is one day. Forty-three percent of our downloads have been questions. As I search the net and deal with other school districts, I see some of the other districts like Miami, a couple of them in Georgia, and other across the nation, also also use Less Talk or some other platform to encourage stakeholder engagement. So we're right along with the current trends in that regard. As it relates to Dr. Sauce and his division, Student Support Services, here you see a listing of a lot of support provided in terms of providing healthcare to students in clinics. Our nurses average a little over thirty-three hundred per month, with eighty-six percent of those students returning to class, taking students to the dentist. This past year, one hundred eighty, one hundred and seven, nine of our students were taken to the dentist. And I'll tell you, not all school districts have nurses in each school building, also they don't have a dental care program. I remember my first year here, walking the road to middle school, and I saw the ladies come out with some kids, hey, where y'all going? Going to the dentist. So how cool is that? Social Works, they provide eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty-five services on average per month to our students and families. You see the central registration numbers there that with new returning student registrations. COVID data for students, they deal with about five thousand nine hundred and forty, be it positive or close contacts that our nurses supported, and also about fifteen hundred plus affidavits. As it relates to our special exception of students, proud to say that we were able to resume Special Olympics. I was able to go to that, it was late April, early May, in our stadium, partnered with Thompson Upson Schools District, and over two hundred scholars participated in that Ninety-nine percent of our psych evaluation were completed on time. As it relates to direct service for students, IEPs, about two hundred and seventy-one per month, and direct support for teachers and supporting to support any freeze-up capacity and dealing with students with IEP, about sixty-six events per month. Lastly, the last slide here. Very, very happy to have Ms. Sandra Long in our district as our lead counselor. I know in our previous role, Dr. Sauce and I spent a lot of time with counselors, but now we have one person dedicated to support them and their needs, to help them better support our our school counselors. Again, this this figure was mentioned, about five point six million dollars in total scholarship money earned by our class of twenty twenty-two. Scholarship started back in January, that occurred, it says two hundred-plus GSCS students and parents, but we have about eighty-two and a hundred students and families from other districts locally that are joining, where they receive information about the FAFSA, the College Application Process for Getting Financial Aid, applying for colleges, dealing with NCAA, applying for scholarships and what have you. And that was a big, big win. As a parent of graduating senior, that parent often talk, it's it's a big experience having a child graduating, transition from high school to college. So that was a big, big service that we provided to our families, and we got a lot of positive feedback from that, and we're going to continue that year after year after year to support our families. Also, we we were able to provide some ACT SAT prep experience and tutorial services for our students as well. Lastly here, as it relates to mental health and positive support for our students, this past school year, Dr. Michael and her team supported one thousand eighty-two students. And Ms. Battle mentioned it earlier, I'm glad you all approved it in terms of mental health condition individual to support our our employees. This past year, four hundred and seventeen, four hundred and seventeen employees were supported in that effort, four hundred and seventeen. To support our families, we offered webinar series throughout the year, four of them on various topics. One of them was mental health supports at home that families can engage in. And lastly, very, very proud to say that our school district was the statewide star award winner for promising practices by this organization, the student support. winner for promising practices by this organization, the Student Support Teams Association of Georgia Educators, ASSTAGE, for our, as quote, enthusiasm, team collaboration, dedication, and understanding of multi-tier support systems district-wide. So to speak further ahead of our student, of our school district, there's those we have tiers of support for our students to advance their success. So this is just, again, a snapshot of operations that occurred throughout the school year, trying to work and meet the needs of our students as well as our employees and community members. So I'm representing you various departments, divisions, so we can answer any questions if you have so, any at this time.
Just happy to see a lot of positive things.
Yes, ma'am.
I just read about the Stage Award. That's awesome. Congratulations to all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate all of the effort that goes into not only doing the work, but then reporting that back out in a tangible form that obviously we can take in, but then our community can take in. So what you are doing, what Adam is doing, and all of the executive directors in their fields is just phenomenal. So thank you. Keep up the good work.
We will do that. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Warren.
Thank you.
And Mr. Johns, you thought you were finished. You have one minute. Just kidding.
Put me on the time. Good evening, board members, Madam Chair. Thank you. You started with me, and we're gonna end with me. I am gonna say brief now. You talked to me about that last time. I'm gonna be brief tonight. First page, one is your balance sheet, 11 months out of 12. So we come in here next month, these figures on general fund on the left are gonna go down because of our salary accruals for, for items we bring in for summer salaries for our teachers. Nutrition, again, on the other side of the yellow, still performing well with the ending balance right now through May of $1.4 million. Page two is our current through May general fund statement. You will see in the current month, our expenses exceeded our revenue by 2.8 million, and that's to be expected as we come down with two months left in the year this month. And in June, that ending balance will come down again as we bring in approximately eight to 10 millions of summer salary accruals, which will bring us back in line with what our budget said to begin with. So again, this is through the month of May. Our special revenue funds, page three, again, this is our snapshot of our grants. The American Rescue Plan application was approved by the state, so that cares one, too. I told you I wasn't gonna say cares, but this document was already turned in before I made that language change. So we've actually been able to draw down approximately $8 million that we had spent on that application. So that's really good news. Thank you to Ms. Austin and her office for spearheading that effort. Page four, Mr. Wheeler's office in the Nutrition Department. Again, we amended this budget earlier, and that'll be reflective next month when we come back to you. Approximately 7.3 million in revenues with expenses of 5.4. So his ending balance right now is approximately 1.4 million. Fiduciary funds, again, this is a monthly update of the amount of funds that we're managing, splosh funds, et cetera, other fiduciary accounts throughout the district is approximately 28 million. And again, for our last, our splosh receipt for last retail month was right at $1.1 million. So again, through 10 months, our average is $1,075,000 per month. I hope that was 60 seconds worth. Is there any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Johns.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Sure, your ride home tonight will be quite a relief. Thank you for all your hard work. All right. Any other comments, board members, before we adjourn? You have your information items from Mr. Ballard and, Mr. Ballard, I think. I just had a quick question for, I know we added, not a question, but we added, I just wanted to thank Mr. Wheeler for adding where children could pick up meals. I think we added two, two or three pickup places, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. I'm sure that's made a big difference. Really appreciate that. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you for being